Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Allenbas?
President.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Folkins?
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as presented for this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you please state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. In this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that were held, was held on October 18th, and that's what we have for this evening to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to a communication.
Yes, council is being asked to approve the request from Friends of the Library for the placement of temporary signs as noted in the council packet and allow city staff the flexibility to approve changes in the dates if requested, and the other same signs they use for the used book sales in the past.
I just had one question of clarification, please. The signs will go up the days of the sale? Will they come down at the end of the day and just be up when the sale is open?
I believe it states that in the documents.
It says under the requested council action that they would be up during the hours of the sales on the date, so I just wanted to clarify that that indeed would happen.
And I'm assuming that's.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Friends of the Library for the placement of temporary signs as noted and allow city staff the flexibility to approve changes in dates if requested.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. Which takes us to appointments.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Caitlin Burrard to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on November 15th, 2025.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Caitlin Burrard to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on November 15th, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of David Bunce to the City of Cadillac-Klam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 15th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of David Bunce to the City of Cadillac-Klam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 15th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Daniel Alto to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a partial term to expire on June 15th, 2025, and he would be replacing Robert Gammons, who passed away recently.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Daniel Alto to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a partial term to expire on June 15th, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
According to the city charter, at the council's first meeting after the regular city election, they shall elect one of its members to serve as mayor pro tem for a term to coincide with the mayor's two-year term of office. Such elections shall be by written ballot and by majority vote of members of the council in office at the time. And you do have little pieces of paper, if you could put the name and pass those to Marcus, that would be wonderful.
By the way, Mike is on the line with us.
Hey, Mike.
Hello.
There he is.
And he can see us all through the.
Oh, I see the little camera there.
There he is.
There he is. Pretty neat tech.
It is.
It's awesome. We have five votes for Councilmember Shippers, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city. Council, several items under the report this evening. The first item is a recommendation regarding our phone system. We are here this evening to advise that we were notified by our consultant just several days ago that our current phone system has essentially a major issue with it with respect to our voicemail component. It is going to basically turn off and the cost of getting another component active on it is cost prohibitive. Therefore, the finance department very quickly went to work and looked at options for the city to move forward with having what's called a hosted phone system, meaning we're not going to have any hardware here at the city currently what we have now, and getting us into a true voice-over internet protocol or VoIP system, which would enable us to essentially drop utilizing a traditional phone company for having, you know, hardwired phone lines into the building. So the general recommendation this evening would be to do a couple of things. One would be to waive our competitive bidding process because simply there is no time. In fact, if there wasn't a council meeting this evening, we would have been coming back to council as an emergency purchase, just simply reporting out. Second would be to enter into a five-year agreement for hosted phone and voicemail services to a company called Telnet Worldwide out of Madison Heights, Michigan, in accordance with their proposal. And third would be to authorize our finance director, Owen Roberts, to sign all documentation required for their services. And as you'll see in the public communication packet, we did look at a few different options. Telnet happens to be the lowest-cost option available, and the estimated monthly recurring cost to the city with the Telnet option, based upon the estimates that we're looking at currently, is right around $1,000 a month.
And I read that this would apply not just to this building, but to the entire system.
Correct, all of the ancillary facilities that the city has as well.
That's great. I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for hosted phone and voicemail services.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item for your consideration this evening is to set a public hearing regarding an amendment.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
We needed one more motion.
That's right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, go ahead, it's all right.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to award a five-year contract for hosted phone and voicemail services to Telnet Worldwide of Madison Heights, Michigan, in accordance with their proposal to authorize Owen Roberts, Director of Finance, to sign all required documentation and to authorize.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, my apologies. The next item for your consideration this evening is a request to set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021, in regard to an amendment to the Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan for the Harry Van De Jack Industrial Park. And what that means, in, I guess, layman's terms, is a request to extend the current Local Development Finance Authority Tax Increment Financing Plan that allows the authority to continue to be able to divert a portion of property taxes captured on that site to pay for the capital operational-related expenses of running the Local Development Finance Authority, the LDFA, which was created back in 1991 for the sole purpose of treating contaminated groundwater. The attorneys recommended a two-year extension to the development plan. We do know that it's going to take more than two years before treatment of the groundwater is over. We're estimating that it's probably going to be closer to two or three more decades. That being said, there's been some significant accomplishment done through the LDFA thus far, and we are waiting for our consultant to provide us with a better window of time as far as how long truly it's going to take before we'll be able to shut these things down. It literally just takes time to get that analysis through, and hopefully, within a couple of years, we'll have a better idea, and then when we go to renew it again, it might be for whatever the duration is of the shutdown of the facilities. So again, tonight, we're looking for council to set the public hearing accordingly to amend the plan to continue to extend it. I'd make a motion to set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021, regarding amendment to Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan for the Harry Van De Jack Industrial Park.
Support. Councilmember Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item probably looks familiar. Council last had it in August of 2000, or excuse me, August of 2020. This is regarding a request for appointment of a consultant to manage the grant for our Well-Headed Protection Grant. However, last year, grant funds were not made available. This year, they are being made available for the program. As a quick reminder, the reason why this is before city council is because even though the amount of funds that we actually spend out of our coffers is basically less than our administrative spending authority limit, because it's a 50-50 grant, the total amount of funds exceeds the administrative spending limit that we have of $7,500, which is why it does require council approval. As a part of that approval as well, we're looking at continuing our relationship with Fleisen Van Der Brink. They're the engineering consultant that has been administering this grant for us in years past, have the most experience with doing it with the city of Cadillac, and so the first action requested this evening would be a waiver bid to continue to use Fleisen Van Der Brink, with the second action to award it to Fleisen Van Der Brink and authorize Jeff Dietl, our Director of Utilities, to be able to sign off on the grant-related documentation accordingly.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding administration of the Well-Headed Protection Grant.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to appoint Fleisen Van Den Brink, I knew I'd do that, to administer the Well-Headed Protection Grant and to authorize Jeff Dietl, Director of Utilities, to sign the grant documentation.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The final item under the city manager's report this evening is a recommendation regarding non-union employee benefit schedule updates. Just very quickly, in an effort to help retain our talent and attract new talent, it's certainly important that from time to time, we review and update our non-union benefit schedule. This is something that we haven't done in at least a decade. Owen Roberts, our finance director, will briefly walk us through the communication with tonight's recommendation.
All right, thanks, Marcus. Like Marcus said, we're really focused on two things with these proposals, retention and recruitment. I know we've all read probably about the great resignation happening, and that's, you know, that's a big deal, and so as part of what we wanted to look at are things that we could do to enhance some of that incentive to stick around and do that with things that really haven't been touched in a long, long time. So it accomplishes that with two things. So the holiday schedule, what we're proposing is to add to the list of holidays in the non-union benefit schedule, President's Day, and we chose this day to recommend because that also will go along with what Cadillac Schools does, is they provide that day off. And so if we have employees with school-aged children, they would be able to have a day off that coincides with a day that the schools also get off. And then we took a look at our longevity bonus schedule as well. That's something that hasn't been updated in many, many years. I found documentation back to 2003 where the schedule was the same. I did find where council approved the schedule originally in 1987, but the minutes did not include the actual schedule in there, so I can't confirm whether it's been the same for that long, but I do know since at least 2003, this schedule has been the same, and that schedule was provided for you in the communication that was in the packet. And so what we did is just look at a way to kind of simplify that schedule and then provide an incentive for people to stick along, stick around longer, and to kind of provide a little reward for them to do so. So the proposal is to do away with kind of a graduated schedule and simply calculate it as $100 per year of service, and that's the proposal for the change in the longevity.
And then the holiday?
Did that one first.
Yeah.
How many people does this impact? How many employees are we looking at?
Yep, so it's 25, confirmed today is 25 people.
How many salary versus hourly roughly?
That I would have to kind of count. My guess would be it's probably a little more weighted to hourly.
Hourly.
Yep.
But this would only apply to non-union?
This is the non-union benefit schedule, yes. These kinds of benefits are all negotiated into contracts, and so we have the four separate contracts that this would not impact.
I would agree. I think it's time for a raise, I'm not sure, about $100 a month, I mean, $100 a year. That would bump, that would increase it, I would think more like $75 a month, a year. Why am I saying month? $75 a year instead of 100, and maybe in a few years, we could bump 75 up to 100. I think it's needed. They deserve it, we have a good staff here.
Well, $100 is about 27 cents a day. I don't think that's exorbitant, and I think that, you know, it's important, like Owen said, longevity really helps the system because people know what they're doing, and when you have people with experience, I mean, our staff is so excellent, and people stay till they retire, and we want to make sure that that still happens. I don't think.
Right. If we bump, it's only 27 cents a day, but if you have 20 years in it, it goes from $7.55 paycheck to $2,000. That's different than looking at 27 cents a day. That's the way I look at it, is how much is the actual check going to be they receive?
Yeah, I don't think that, in relationship to where it's currently at, I think that you've done a good job of looking at, you know, how do you just simplify the process without exorbitant additional cost? And I certainly think that incentive for people to be loyal and want to maintain their positions here at the city are really important. As Councilmember Shippers said, I think that this is a pretty simple way to encourage people and let them know they're appreciated.
I agree. I also like the idea of it not being, you know, where it is currently, where three to five years is one, and then 30-plus is one thing. I think that with each year, you get a little bit extra. I think that helps incentivize.
And truly, with the number of people that are going to be at the top end of that, the number of years of service, that's going to be a smaller number of people than those that would simply receive $100 or $200 a year, so.
Nobody else?
I mean, I know wages have been going up quickly, you know, at the business that I run, they've gone up very rapidly in the last two or three years. And the greater reward comes for the employees that have been here the longest, so I'm okay with this.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the non-union employee benefit schedule as presented.
I'll support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
A reluctant yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
I agree with Councilmember Allenbas's comments on the cost, but I also agree with the time period, so I'll say yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. Moving into adoption of ordinances and resolutions this evening, we do have a handful for your consideration tonight. The first one is a request to adopt a resolution regarding a local governmental unit approval for a social district permit for Roasted Cafe LLC. This is something that the city council did several times over, over the last few months. This would allow for the new cafe that has yet to open, but will be hopefully soon, to be able to participate within the City of Cadillac's social district and social zone.
Great. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding local government unit approval for social district permit for Roasted Cafe LLC.
I'll support.
Councilmember Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. In an effort to be sort of expedient in terms of time, the comments that I have now will really reflect both of the next two items, they're both interrelated. They're with respect to a request for consideration of setting a public hearing for December 6th, 2021, to amend both our recreational marijuana and medical marijuana ordinances. And so I think it's important, certainly for the public, to also know why we're looking at doing this. We're doing this, or looking at doing this, as an effort to become a location basically more desirable for industrial-type facilities, specifically growing-type operations, to be able to be in the city of Cadillac and specifically within our industrial zone. The ordinances in general update the licensing restrictions, stacking restrictions, and relevant other language to make it possible for there to be, under one roof, a larger growing-type operation that'll have multiple growing licenses hosted by the facility, in addition to there also being a processing-type license also operating within one roof. Various members of council and other city officials had the opportunity to visit a sizable cultivation center in a community about 25, 30 minutes away from us a week or so ago, to see that type of operation in use, which is quite a remarkable facility to visit, and wouldn't be possible under our current ordinances. And so again, the approach and the reason why we're looking at doing this is to be able to open up the ability for Cadillac within our industrial parks to be able to have truly an industrial-type facility there, no different than any other manufacturing-type facility that our parks are, you know, are currently home to. Just as an aside, at the same time that council goes through this process, and again, tonight all you're doing is setting a public hearing, the planning commission also will be initiating a process similar, because one of the provisions requires an update to the zoning code that's relevant to spatial separation. And so what we're looking at doing is trying to get all of it to sync up together as best as possible, so potentially by the end of the calendar year or very early on into the new year, everything is in place for these updates to be made.
To calm any fears down, there are no plans of putting growth centers in residential neighborhoods?
No, no, this is.
Things that might come up.
Yeah, this is only regarding updates to licensing that we have already in place for our industrial zones. This does not do anything to increase the number of licenses regarding any type of retail dispensary or provisioning center at all. That, you know, that's something that should the city council wish to revisit, you certainly can, but at this point in time, it does not include any, anything regarding anything other than what I referenced, the relative, relative language to facilitating industrial growing-type operations.
Do we have a setback from a house, a residential house, on this, or is it just allowed anywhere in the industrial park?
Anywhere within the, anywhere within the industrial park, it would be allowed, but that is the item, the one item, that goes to the planning commission for consideration first, before coming back to city council for your consideration, second. So, but it would be anywhere within the industrial park, similar to other industries that we have right now.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce an ordinance to amend Section 10 hyphen 2 of the Cadillac City Code relating to recreational marijuana establishment and set a public hearing for December 6th, 2021.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next item, Mayor, members of the city council, is just for the other ordinance, the sister ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce an ordinance to amend Section 10 dash 3 of the Cadillac City Code relating to medical marijuana facilities and set a public hearing for December 6th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, in our.
One more.
Okay.
Sorry, one more.
Nope, I see it.
Yep. So, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This last item is a request for consideration to adopt a resolution of support that endorses the plan of the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau to apply for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trail Town designation. The, basically, the resolution in your packet does exactly what I just stated. If the Visitors Bureau is successful in getting this designation, what does that mean? Well, that would mean that our various trails within the community would be incorporated into the state's Pure Michigan trail maps and marketing materials. Additionally, I believe they may actually cover also the implementation of some signage and branding, and generally stated, you know, there'll be a lot of good PR information that comes out as a part of the Pure Michigan, you know, Trail Town designation. And so there's a handful of these designations throughout the state. It's wonderful that the Visitors Bureau is looking at making this application for us. In fact, our executive director is here with us this evening, Kathy Moran, accordingly, and if there's any questions, certainly you can ask myself or Kathy, and the resolution's in your packet.
Would you like to say something about it?
Hi, everyone, I'm Kathy Moran, the executive director of the Visitors Bureau. Not too much more than what Marcus has said, other than I just appreciate the building relationship we've been having with the city, as well as the chamber and other organizations. As he mentioned, there's a handful of Trail Town communities across the state. One of them is already Reed City. This year, Big Rapids is also applying, so we're thinking to be a nice joint cooperative along the White Pine Trail. There's a lot of initiatives there, and, you know, really just highlighting this broad community support that we have for the marketing of these recreation opportunities that we have, not with, not only within the city, but obviously also in the surrounding areas with the DNR and Forest Service. So the designation would actually be, you know, Cadillac, even though it's kind of a broader Cadillac here, the local university or government, so. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to support endorsing the plan.
plan of the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau, Bureau, MDNR, Trail Town Designation Application.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening in our packet, we do have the minutes from the 4/20/2021 Historic District Commission, along with the Planning Commission meetings from July 26th, and then also the Zoning Board of Appeals from September 16th, 2021. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if you come forward. If you please state your name and write it for the clerk, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, council, Mrs. Mayor. I'll write my name first here, and is this the last public comment on the last part of our agenda? Okay, thank you. Okay. I'll finish this up. You guys know who I am. Council, Mayor, my name's Randy, 201 Howard, Cadillac. Just a couple of quick things. It's winter time now. I'd like to see the city to become more proactive, make our community a walkable community come this winter time, with snow plowing, stay on top of it, sidewalks, et cetera. A lot of times, we're trying to walk, it would be, you know, beneficial for the citizens of the city of Cadillac, that we'd be proactive on keeping our sidewalks open all winter long. Okay, a couple of things real quick. On this marijuana thing we discussed, nothing about on pre-election, you know, nobody, no paper, nothing, nobody talked about, the sky's the limit on marijuana. I guess there's money, a lot of money into it, it's a real shame, seeing that Cadillac is the meth capital of Michigan, which is a real damn shame, you know, and nobody's fixing this problem. I've got a nephew that's sitting in the county jail, did two tours of Afghanistan. He had to do some nasty stuff over there. He's got PSD and he's pretty messed up. That's a real shame. We got to help these people. I don't know, does the city need a meth clinic? I don't know what we're going to do about that. Anyways, those are a couple of things I wanted to discuss. Mr. Ingles, City Council, you ran some nice ads in the paper. When you first ran, back in 1917 roughly, you were quoted as saying you were not harming an individual, and you did your best to hurt Matt. You did a good job, very good job. There's a few other things I need to talk about if I had. The city's being very disingenuous to the citizens of Cadillac, spending a lot of money. We need some tax relief also, I'm just making a quick comment, and about 30, 35 years ago, there was the Gang of Four. Somebody wrote the article, and, you know, I still believe that Gang of Four is still alive and well today, if some people know what I'm talking about. So, and again, with the passing of all these ordinances and that, Mr. Wallace, Owen, you need some, you and I need to talk, too. My street is still messed up, and I've called the city a couple of times, talked to Ken Payne, left a message, the city secretary, nobody's responded to me, and the yards are still tore up. We left them on purpose.
Okay, Mr. Lindell?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, if anyone has anything this evening.
Mayor, if I may just quickly jump in, I left the check that we had received from consumers, I thought perhaps you might want to just show it or have someone show it.
I'd love to show. Mike, can you see that?
I can see it, I can't read it.
Well, they didn't make it out to you, if you were looking for your name. But the city of Cadillac was one of two communities out of over 140 that applied to Consumers Energy for their prosperity award, and was granted a $250,000 grant to be used to help implement a community revitalization plan. And the community revitalization plan that we applied to consumers for implementation purposes captures initiatives that are part of the city council's goals and objectives. You know, everything from helping with blight removal to creating a micro grant program for homeowners to apply for, to help fix up some of their homes, to beautifying a couple of areas around town through the creation of micro parks. So really, a great program that we were shocked, honestly, to have been one of the two that got the grant, and consumers was very impressed by how, you know, starting from, you know, the top-down with this specific body through, you know, through the organization, they were happy to see that we've been thinking about these types of issues and topics, and hope that we'll be able to now move them forward accordingly. So, thank you, everybody.
I'll go. I think it's really exciting what we're seeing with the Visitors Bureau and the Chamber and the city working together with the social district, to go with Mr. Lindell's comment. I think it's exciting that this winter, we're going to be able to market to people to stay in our hotels and have a safe, beautiful environment to them, for them to come down, enjoy our restaurants, our coffee shops, go to our fireplace, our commons area. I think it's really neat, and while we're, I know our shop owners have some obligations for plowing, I think that if we can help them, so we know that everything's connected. However you get into Cadillac, you can walk this winter. I think that's going to be really neat and exciting. Thank you, Kathy.
I'd also like to add that the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council is meeting tomorrow. We're meeting at 3:00 instead of 4:00 to accommodate some of our members from, that have classes at Baker College, so, or something with that, or have, anyway, we're meeting at 3:00 tomorrow, and then after that, it will be 4:00 the third Tuesday of each month, and we meet in these chambers. If you are or know of a youth in the Cadillac area and would like to join the Mayor's Youth Council, you don't have to live in the city, but if you go to school here or work in the community, you're welcome to join and have a voice in youth programming here in the city.
And the lights go on the 26th down in the park?
Yes, sir.
It's always a fun time, be there. My wife and I always go. That's it for me. Robert, come on, come on. No?
I would like to just take the opportunity this evening to commend the staff on the work that they did on the grant writing for the Consumers Energy grant. It's amazing, when there were 130 or 140 grants that came in, that Cadillac would end up in the top 20, let alone the top two. So that says huge things about our staff, and it also says huge things about Consumers Energy. Carolyn, who is here from the foundation at Consumers Energy, is so taken with our community, and she described it as a Norman Rockwell community down in the park, and I think she hit it on the head. So, to your point, I mean, it's going to be a beautiful winter, and we're going to have people out and about, and consumers seize the investment that we've made in ourselves in this community, and they're willing to help us out with that. So, great work. Yeah, great. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.